Okay, my computer says six thirty. Okay, you've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or changes they need to made to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, public comment. We, first item we have is a certificate for Chris Godell. And it reads, "The certificate is awarded to Chris Godell for your dedicated service to the City of Mayor and the Mayor Planning Commission since two thousand and seven." Thank you, on behalf of Mayor, City Council, and I think Ivan wants his picture.
I think we want a shift date.
Ivan, Ivan.
A lot of years.
Thank you for stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Ivan, no, prompt me out of that just. Okay, is there anything else you wish us to address the council? Moving on then, to the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes for the April eleventh regular council meeting, four dot two approval of minutes for the April eleventh work session, four dot three approval of minutes for the April eighteenth special council meeting, four dot four approval of minutes for a March eighth special park board meeting, four dot five for additional claims in the month of April, four dot six approval of the Sheriff's Department report for a month ending in March twenty sixteen, and four dot seven authorization of the mayor's signature on a contract with Municipal Development Group. Any of those items need to be pulled for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, staff reports, public works.
Mr. Mayor, council members, in your packet you do have the public works, um, uh, staff report, but Kyle is also present in the audience if you had any thing you wanted to ask him about.
Kyle, I know you mentioned a while ago on to about that water that pools on Fifth Street by the high school up there. Is somebody working because that, that street is breathing, breaking up there too badly?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, it's on my list for this year for road repair and possibly a little ditch work, so.
Okay, it looks like just the ditch work to get the water off.
Just, just around our after road, right, that's for the spring when the water was breathing and piling and first part of the year, yeah. It's been an issue for the last couple of years.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Kyle? Okay, then moving on to the city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Dave is not present at the meeting tonight, but his report is in your packet. If, if there's anything you have questions about, I would ha, be happy to convey the message to him.
So the wetland restoration, once this connection is done, then everything is done as far as the piping, basically?
Correct, but then, um, prairie restoration will have, I believe, five years of managing the vegetation.
Right. But all, all the excavating and that kind of stuff is done?
Correct.
Any other questions for the city engineers' report? Okay, um, sheriff's department report, that was in the consent agenda, right? Okay. Okay, city administration, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have my report in front of you, and also as part of my report, I've provided you with the first quarter financials, or where we are at, um, with the budget for the general fund and the water and sewer. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those items if you had questions at all.
Any questions for the one? Okay, moving on to six dot one.
Mr. Mayor, council members, park board is recommending that the city council install signs informing residents about picking up after their dogs and that dogs must be on a leash. The need would be for about fifteen signs to be placed at the entrance to each park and on trails entering the parks. The cost from the county sign shop for the signs is sixteen dollars and thirteen cents each, or a total of two hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents just for the signs. The city would also need to purchase poles, and the cost for eight-foot posts for the signs would be fifteen times twelve, for a total cost of posts of a hundred and eighty. Grand total for both the signs and the posts would be four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Staff is requesting approval of the purchase and the installation of the signs in the parks. Had some complaints about people and their dogs not picking up after their dogs and the dogs are off-leash, so I don't, this may assist the CSO in being able to enforce the ordinance a little bit more also.
Are they black and white?
No, they're brown and white, actually. I didn't do color on this.
That's all right, I was just wondering.
Yep, they're brown.
So one on each end of each park?
Correct. We kind of figured it out there, and I don't know if you want to expand, Kyle?
Kind of on the entrance of, kind of at the heads of each trail.
True.
So no matter which direction they enter the park.
Sign with them.
It'll be on the entrance. Will it be up by the, by the street where they go down in, or closer to the park?
I guess it'd be.
Both?
If you wanted further information, it'd be a little further. I would assume make it a little further, not like right where the signs are. I would make it in, you know, where they're walking their dog and access to it. I want it kind of by itself.
Well, just, the people on the trails that are walking around the neighborhoods would see it if they were out. And they saw that they walked into the park. Okay.
Make a motion to make purchase in all the signs in the parks.
The motion made second to approve the purchase and installation of the signs in the parks. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Excuse me. Uh, six dot two, approval of addendum to purchase agreement for four oh nine Shim Corp.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city has been received of the signed purchase agreement for the property at four oh nine Shim Corp. The owner has proposed an addendum to the original purchase agreement. The owner is requesting the following, that the buyer pays second half of the real estate taxes, and I provided you with that in the packet. That amount would be nine hundred and seventy dollars, and like I said, property tax information is attached. City sewer has stubbed to the property. If you look at on the page that he identifies, somehow paid, line two thirteen, it didn't get checked, and sewer has been stubbed into the property. He extended the acceptance deadline is May first because on here it's February twenty-ninth, and that date has already passed. The seller would like to be able to use the property until November thirtieth, twenty sixteen. The addendum is attached for your review, and behind the addendum, I also provided you with a full purchase agreement for reference. Staff's requesting council approval and authorization for the mayor's signature on the addendum. And they would probably be the mayor and clerk's signature on the addendum, if there's some places for it.
Hey, hey, qu, any questions or comments, discussion?
How close are we to selling the other piece?
Um, the next, not this item, but the next item after that is the purchase agreement back from Casey's with all days changes. They left the October twelfth date in, in that purchase agreement, but they know, because I have talked to them, the city wants to expedite the closing if we can. So I think they just left the twelfth just because to be comfortable with it. So I, I, I would say October twelfth according to what we have.
There was a condition on there that, uh, they'd be able to build the station. Are they going to be in for plan review on that soon, or?
On what, on what?
On the case.
I don't know. I think they're waiting probably for the purchase agreement to be signed.
Yeah, let's, let me assist them, they'll get that out in the purchase agreement there. Okay, so anything else on this purchase agreement for four oh nine Shim Corp., which is basically just the real estate taxes and the extension of the date, right?
Yep, and then clarifying that the sewer's stubbed in, that that item didn't get checked on the purchase agreement. Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Yeah, now is there a motion to approve this, uh, these changes to that purchase agreement? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made second to approve the addendum to the purchase agreement for four oh nine Shim Corp. as listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, six dot three, approval of park board recommendation for Discovery Park.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the park board has been discussing putting curbing around all of the playground areas in the city parks. So the park board had placed that in the twenty sixteen capital outlay, and then it goes forward for the next couple of years doing one park a year. So park board is recommending construction of the concrete curbing around the playground equipment area, and this is in Discovery Park. The cost to complete the curbing in Discovery Park is four thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, park board has included the cost of six thousand three hundred and thirty-six in their twenty sixteen capital improvement plan for the construction of the curbing. And that six thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollar item came from, um, I had contacted the City of Watertown because they had placed curbing, and they paid twenty-two dollars a running foot, but we got a bid for seventeen dollars a running foot to be placed. So that's what, why there's a difference in that, uh, it's less money than what we had in the CIP. So park board is recommending approval of the bid for Discovery Park from Thomas Clementson Concrete and Masonry in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So there is no cost saving to doing all at once?
There is cost savings to doing them all, but I think that the, he can't do them all at once. And so what he's saying is that may, if we get the grant for Westridge Park, then he could do Westridge Park at that time too, and there might be a cost savings because he's, he is the one that's giving us the bid for the park shelter down there. And so then, and then he could move and do another park after that. But the park board will have to take that into consideration as we go, and I'll bring them forward if that's their recommendation.
I think that was a budgeting issue too. We didn't have the budget all at once. I don't think the savings was as great as what, they apparently have already saved money just by getting a different bid, so. So will he need anything else, like, uh, I don't know, other things that are going to have to happen there because we're digging that out and putting those curb in? Like, does it include the mulch and the stuff like that that you're going to need to, or is that going to be a different?
That'll be, yeah, once, once we get the curbing in, and everything, he'll, I'll order more mulch, put mulch around it and anything. But I was already planning on ordering more mulch for that park stand, so that should all be fine.
So this, this replaces that rubbery?
Right, there, right now in the Discovery Park, there isn't even that rubbery.
Or there isn't?
It's actually just that, that landscape edging, that plastic landscape edging that you see like around some of the newer houses. This is, this really tipsy out of it. And actually, we're supposed to, from the, uh, curbing down, we're supposed to be a foot thick of mulch, of curbing all the way through the park consistently. Right now, it's just, you know, that edging, and there's dirt, and then the, you know, um, wood just kind of cluttered out from that. So it's kind of, it was kind of the cheap way how they did it. But this was, and then right now, all that edge is pulling up, and it's just kind of a mess. So that's why I, I know the park board had to go with Discovery first and kind of work their way.
Okay.
And then would you be buying enough mulch to get to that foot? I mean, is that how high the curbing is?
Yep, yeah. Right now, I mean, there's a good amount of mulch in there, right? We'll break the mulch back, put the curbing in, and we'll add additional mulch, which should be fine.
So the outside of the curbing is going to be level with the ground?
Everything will be level, so everything, that's their goal, is to make everything wheelchair accessible.
How thick is it?
Four inches thick.
It is.
Four inches thick, four inches wide, so basically a solid, a solid little sidewalk around.
Oh, cool. Okay, I was like going to wonder what it looked like.
Yep, yeah, they'll look really nice.
More than just curbing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more than just curbing, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and he'll, he'll.
Make it as big as what you need it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I really would look to make sure that we have additional room for it, so.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Make sure, you know, if we ever want something.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that was the issue with him, he said he doesn't have enough forming to do all the parks at once.
Yeah, if he, if we formed up all the parks at once, it'd be a lot.
It'd be a lot of money.
A lot of wood, and a lot of money to do all. So this way you can reuse the forms and everything.
So will you saw it on the outside of that then when you're done?
Saw it, I had received something, yeah. Probably see, you mean, to work on.
How long is the park usually going to be closed then? Are we going to have like signs up, or?
Yeah, well, it'll probably, actually, we, sure.
Are you putting something up so people are tempted to?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to.
Write their names all over it?
Some cross, cross.
Right, they put their hand in the?
Put stuff on Facebook and the webpage.
Their dog print.
Paw, paw prints.
Yeah. Not unless you get up there early.
Yeah, I think that's pretty quick.
Put it up on the Facebook page like a couple days before you're going to do it, just so they know, and then maybe the day of, just say that that park's closed, and then let them know when it, notify them when it's open again, so they'll know when.
That's a good idea, yeah. So they'll know when to be ready to put the paw prints in or handprints in. Okay, is there a motion to approve this, uh, the curbing in, uh, I got the name of the park, Discovery Park? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made to, second to approve the cur, concrete curbing in Discovery Park. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, six dot four, approval of revised purchase agreement with Casey's for three fourteen Nash Avenue South.
Mr. Mayor, council members, attached is a revised purchase agreement for the property at three fourteen Nash Avenue South. This purchase agreement reflects the city attorney's comments from the email of March twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen. So staff is requesting council approval of the purchase agreement submitted by Casey's Retail Company for the purchase of Casey's, purchased by Casey's of Lot One, Lot Two, Stell Commercial and Bestra Park for the price of two hundred and twenty thousand, and directing the mayor and clerk to sign the purchase agreement on behalf of the City of Mayor, and to execute a limited warranty deed and any other appropriate documents at closing.
So I assume Dave Hubert reviewed this, so it's all to his?
Correct.
Spex.
Yes, he, yes. He reviewed it to make sure that they included all of his comments.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions for the one about this, or any comments? Need to be answered? If not, is there a motion to approve this purchase agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made second to approve the purchase agreement with Casey's as being revised, uh, for three fourteen Nash Avenue South. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, six dot five, approval of Wayzetta timing contract for Mayor Five K.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the park board will be conducting a Mayor Moxie Five K again this year. The date of the event is Saturday, June eleventh at nine AM. The cost for Wayzetta timing is three hundred dollars plus fifty-five cents a mile for the timer, and the cost for timing of the event in two thousand and fifteen was three hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Park Board is recommending approval of the contract with the Wayzetta timing to provide timing services for the Mayor Moxie Five K on Saturday, June eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. And the expenses usually, um, the registrations cover the expenses on this, so, um, this is the, with.
So it's basically, basically a wash.
Right, correct. So a motion authorizing me to sign that contract with the Wayzetta timing for the Mayor Moxie Five K for June eleventh is the request.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the Wayzetta timing price for the Max, Five K Moxie, Mayor Moxie Five K. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, then approval, six dot six, approval of Mayor Moxie Five K prizes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, park board again is hosting its fourth annual Mayor Moxie Five K run. The park board would like to offer fifty dollars to each male and female in the following categories that you have up there, ten to nineteen, twenty to twenty-nine, thirty to forty-nine, and fifty and older. The total for the prizes would be four hundred dollars. Park Board did divide the ten to twenty-nine category into two categories of ten to nineteen and twenty to twenty-nine this year, so this increased the, the prizes by a hundred dollars. Again, the prizes are offset by the entrance fees for the run. Park Board is recommending approval of the prizes for the Mayor Moxie Five K in the amount of, total amount of four hundred dollars.
It's for the male and female first place winner in each of those categories, age groups.
Is there a motion to approve the prizes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made second to approve the Mayor Moxie Five K prizes. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh, six dot seven, approval of resolution four twenty-five sixteen sixteen, appointment of Janelle Gildemeister as deputy city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff has completed the background and reference checks on Janelle Gildemeister for the full-time deputy clerk position. Background check was clear and refer, check, reference checks were very favorable for Janelle Gildemeister. The starting wage for the deputy clerk position would be eighteen dollars per hour with benefits, and the starting date is scheduled to be May eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. And it's all reflected in that, in the resolution. Staff's requesting approval of the resolution for the appointment of a deputy clerk.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, for, for this, for the approval of this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made second to approve resolution four twenty-five sixteen sixteen, appointing Janelle Gildemeister as deputy city clerk. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, six dot eight, approval of liquor license for Barrels Incorporated, two twelve Nash Avenue North.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mayor Wine and Spirits has been sold. The new owner is Matthew Berlison, and the trade name of the business is Barrels Incorporated. He will continue to do business under the Mayor Wine and Spirits name though, and he's, but he's applying for the liquor license under Barrels Incorporated. When a business that sells liquor changes name, the liquor license must also be changed. So the city is in receipt of an off-sale liquor license application from Matthew Berlison from Mayor Wine and Spirits. City staff's requesting approval of the liquor license, and the appropriate fee will be paid, background check will be completed, and insurance information will be unfilled before issuing for the license. We're currently still waiting for the sheriff's department to send back the, um, reference check. So staff's recommending approval of the liquor license for Barrels Incorporated doing business as Mayor Wine and Spirits.
Is there a motion to approve this, uh, liquor license application?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the, um, liquor license application for Barrels Incorporated. Any further discussion or questions?
Did you say the background check is done, or not?
We're waiting on it. We're waiting for it to come.
So it'll be pending that, of course?
Right, right.
And then are, is it prorated?
No, it's a hundred dollars. It's an off-sale license, so, no.
It's a hundred dollars, but then you pay the hundred dollars to get the background check?
They pay the hundred dollars, too.
Oh, okay, they pay that extra?
Right.
I see.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, that completes the agenda. For your information, what was that again?
Yeah, they.
Everbridge.
Everbridge.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Okay, are there any council reports? I, I guess.
Clean up go without a hitch? Any complaints about cleanup day at all?
Not a one. No. I didn't receive any. There were no messages.
I was surprised. I thought I'd see, usually we have a lot more people kind of participate when I get rid of junk.
Maybe they all got rid of it last year.
I know, they really did.
I managed to get rid of a bunch of it, so I was, glad to see it go. Um, I just had a, a comment on Janelle's, her background was graphic arts, and, um, I would, uh, I think it would be wise if we were to at least furnish her computer with, pardon? Tap into that, furnish her computer with, um, Photoshop Elements, which is about a hundred bucks. Uh, that way she can take use of that software and do some, get some of the graphics things, the publications, really spiced up a little bit. As long as she knows Photoshop, it's not a learning curve there at all for her on that one. And you can get it for about a hundred bucks for the latest version. But for your elements, you don't, we don't want to spend money on the other one. That's ridiculous, so take it for that, so.
Will the computer be able to handle it big enough?
Well, yeah, that won't be a problem. A little bit that should be doing, that is, that'd be no problem at all. Anything else for the council, any other council reports? Okay, uh, any other business that needs to come in for the council? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we are adjourned. Okay, then we have a, our work session. You claim that first of all here.
On your agenda.
Yep, I know, I, I got a lot of it here too, so.
Todd Hagan was going to be here from Briggs and Morgan. He had a meeting in, um, Waconia at six o'clock, so, to talk to you about conduit financing, to see if you had any questions for him about that again, um, so hopefully he'll be here shortly.
Okay, he was in Waconia at six?
Yeah, the meeting at six there to do some, and then thought he'd be here, so.
And was that just information for us, or was it somebody requesting it that?
Well, they are requesting, um, Briggs and Morgan is the attorney that I have provided you this letter. They're bond counsel attorneys. Presbyterian Homes is actually asking if the City of Mayor wouldn't refine, refinance some bonds for them. So I know that when we did this last year, we had some questions, or people said, "Well, I didn't realize this was coming up so fast." So I thought I would have him come tonight and explain to you exactly what conduit financing is. And I provided you with the, the copy of the, um, policy on conduit financing. It doesn't obligate the city in any way. They just take advantage of our full faith and credit, is what it is, and our, our bond rating. That we aren't on the hook for anything, we aren't on the hook for any repayment of bonds.
If they take advantage of our full faith and credit, I'll just go and say we're not on the hook or anything, that's, I guess they're.
We, because that's why they're called conduit financing, because they conduit through us, and they just are able to, law allows nonprofits the ability to be able to go through a government. And we're not the only city that's doing this, because we didn't have enough, um, qualification. There's two other cities that are also doing it to refund them for them. So, um, we collect a fee. This was one thing we do get from doing this. It's a minimum, or maximum, I think, of twenty-five thousand dollars, um, because we will have expenses. But, um, again, he could maybe explain it a little bit better for us, but it's, we aren't responsible for anything.
Do you know the, the ramifications? Was there a risk to our rating if they defaulted on any of the loans?
Nope, I can't remember. The only risk is that we can't, we can't issue any bonds this year.
I can't remember it ended up.
Whether we weren't going to issue any bonds anyway for anything.
Oh, okay, so we.
Just for this year, we can't issue any bonds, and, because they're using, there's, you, the cities are allowed to issue debt or bonds based, it's two or three percent of your total market value. And so they're going to do ten million, it gets us close to our two or three percent of market value. So we just wouldn't be able to issue any bond, any debt then, just this year. It's an annual amount to take in issue, so.
Okay, well, let's see if he gets you, we can come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, the videotaping on personnel committee meetings.
Yeah, we had talked a little bit about that and whether you wanted to do that or not do that when the city council sits as a full personnel committee. And when I reached out to another city that the full council sits as a city, as a personnel committee, they choose not to videotape, but they audiotape them. So I don't know what you want to do, if you want to videotape them or not, and then I guess it goes back again to the, the quality of the tape, too. We got to talk about that. And then I guess it goes back again to the, the quality of the tape, too, we got to talk about that.
Well, what's your opinion?
How was the audio on the, on your digital recorder?
Very good.
You can hear everybody, no problem.
Yes, yep.
But are we, did they all get recorded?
I mean, well, we just got, well, it isn't, it isn't a requirement. The city doesn't have to. We don't have to videotape city council meetings, but you chose to do that to be transparent. So, personnel committee meetings don't have to be recorded either. You're just doing that to create transparency, so.
So how does that, how does that work with the Freedom of Information Act and everything? We're talking, that's what discipline, for example, out of employee, is that discoverable?
Then it would be closed. Then you could close it under the open meeting law, it could be a closed meeting. And then, then it would have to be taped. And then the tape is kept for so many years. Um, so, the audio tape.
So what's the difference if they're audio/video, or if they're just a digital recorder that may or may not pick everything up?
The audio recorder probably picks everything up pretty well, because I went back and listened to some of the tapes this last week. And you can pick everybody up. I was surprised by how well you could hear everything. So if this isn't recording very well right now, what do we want to do? Or do we do the improvement here?
I think we continue doing the digital taping of the meetings.
The audio, audio only.
Audio only. And not tape them. Until we get that fixed.
Okay.
And I don't know, we can discuss it again at that time if you want to, or we just continue to not record that.
So the digital ones just never get taped over? Like you can't accidentally tape over a meeting?
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm worried about.
I mean, I get worked.
Just stuff like that, then we don't have it. Then someone needs it, or, you know, we get out of it, or whatever, and we don't have it.
You could use your video, use your video recording tool.
Yeah, because.
We could record, I mean, I'm concerned about redundancy, and you could record it too.
The audio got shut off on this one once, and so then there was no audio. So, it, it can happen here, too.
Sure, yep.
But again, it's not a requirement by law, so, you're doing it to be more transparent.
Well, that's, I guess, my question is, is there anything ever that's going to be recorded that we don't want to get, that shouldn't get out? I mean, if it's a personnel issue that if no action was taken, and, and so it's not public information after an investigation, then, you know, is that still discoverable under the Freedom of Information Act? That somebody can still kind of come and get that, even if it's not necessarily meant to be, because it just, things happen where things get released that are not meant to be.
Right, right.
Not meant to be released, but once they're in writing, or they're recorded, it's government data, and government data is.
Let's check.
If they record something that doesn't need to be recorded, that, that.
Exactly.
Or somebody in the future.
Right, okay.
Can those other digital recordings be saved to a CD after a closed meeting?
At the same recorder, you can see their statements, we've got a CD.
We should get in the habit of doing that. Backing it up after the meeting.
That would make me feel better, that's for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
At least you have, you have one, one backup copy.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I don't, I don't see any need to videotape personnel meetings, so it's, I mean, if they're not, it's not required by law to videotape it anyhow, so they were just doing it because, I'm not sure why. Do we even need to audiotape it? Now, if it's closed meeting, that we have to audiotape, that we have to record.
Yeah, yeah.
Because once it's government data, you're never going back to non-government data. Once it's here, it's created, it's there, it's accessible. So I need to think about things that you don't necessarily want to, you know, always have over, if you don't have to record it.
Well, if it was disciplinary, then it probably.
Would be a closed meeting.
Right.
It would be recorded.
Then it has to be recorded, and then someone can request it, right?
No.
No.
Nope. Only the, only the person that's the action of the disciplinary action can request the recording.
Unless, unless, unless something's sustained, and something's turned.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, okay.
So their decision whether it's a closed meeting or not.
Correct. And when I do, when you do my performance reviews, I can say I don't want it to be closed and have it be open if I want to. I, I'm the one that calls that, not, not the city council. And in fact, on that audio recording, it goes back to Chris Capaldi and my reviews. That's how far back some of them go, because you can hear Chris on the tape, so, they're all there.
So, are we, try to decide if we're going to just continue this recording them, or not record them at all? Or what's, what's our wish? I mean, are we just?
He wants me to check and find out what's discoverable under the Freedom of Information Act.
What's the lead of Minnesota City Council?
Okay.
Yeah, let's go with that, probably.
Yep.
Let's come back to it and see, because I don't think we've got a clear handle what we, what our feelings are.
Right.
Okay, um, so we're done with that? Did everybody get a chance to go do that NeoGov demonstration? I, I did, I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, I know it's some upfront cost, but I think it really does down the road, I mean, for smaller staff, it's not crucial, but still provides a lot of information, or a lot of good, um, reference stuff. So, I would think, I'd like to see us go with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think I'd like to see it for, you know, obviously for all the full-time staff. And I think everyone would like to see included there, as your fire chief, maybe down to the assistant chief. Um, I'm not sure, you know, below that, if necessarily they need to do that now, but, you know, as we get, as we get bigger, you know, you kind of.
You mean like the captains and stuff?
Yeah. They just load up.
Well, they, we just had several of them apply for it. Didn't do that, I don't think.
Yeah, too, captains, captains, too. And, yeah, I think that's, that's a good way to just kind of bring everybody on board to, you know, what, I think it brings, we can set organizational goals, so that we kind of knows what, you know, overall missions are, and what the council feels are important. Um, I think I see Luann being, you know, probably more into that process than the other councils are saying.
Yeah, so I, I think I'd like to see us.
I will contact them and get a contract and get a dollar amount for us, but.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's an awful lot of stuff there you can do with it, I think. I mean, it's a ton of stuff you can do with it.
I mean, it's, you know, you can set goals, you set your own personal goals.
Mm-hmm.
How much was it?
Do you have the, what was, how much was it, the setup?
It was like, it was, was it like, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot. It's not over a thousand dollars, I know that. No, and I think the setup was under four, like four hundred, I want to say three ninety-six, is what I want to say, but I'm not for sure, don't quote me on that. It sticks in my brain somehow.
Okay, uh, looks like we have somebody from Briggs &amp; Morgan that can enlighten us.
No, these are mailers. He's out with our financial, he's our financial person.
Okay.
Your financial advisor, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, hi, just a quick trip from Waconia. I haven't cut through the back yet. I have a handout here.
You do, why don't I, do you want me to hand them out for you?
Yeah, yeah. I think you have a double sided. Um, maybe I can. One from my table. I'll put them out, I do can.
Oh, yeah.
So it looks like, um, I don't know too much about the background of the project, but it looks like, um.
Todd, I provided them with the letter from Briggs &amp; Morgan.
Okay, yeah.
And I have, they have that in their pot, in the packet, and then they have our conduit, um, policy, or, that we have as a city.
Well, that's great.
Okay.
Yep, and so generally speaking, Luann asked me to come to the council workshop just to do a little bit of background of conduit financing. Um, you know, just that Waconia is doing a governmental bond, you know, three, two or whatever, like they normally do, also here in Miller. They also do, they're also asked over there to participate in conduit financing as well. So, you know, it's not, it's not really unusual, a lot of cities, but they always kind of scratch their head and go, what do we, what are we doing again? What, how did this? I mean, we put, somebody issued bonds, you know, with our name on it, and how does this affect the city of, of Mayor? There's two different kinds of conduit financing. One, you don't see much anymore. Um, one you don't see much anymore, and that's for manufacturing facilities. I think the last one was at Briggs &amp; Morgan I worked on was for DeVisco, which now turned into Cambria. Those guys were the Davis Brothers, or, they were into cheese and processed kind of food like that, so they got out of some of that business up in La Sure there to, and got into, you know, countertops. And it's still manufacturing, so the bonds that are still outstanding out there are, are, are still for that, for that purpose. Also Glenn Taylor, I think, for his Taylor Corp, when I was at Briggs. They also issued some bonds in Mankato for some manufacturing as well. This one here, I think, they're talking about is for a, more of a nonprofit, five oh one C three, probably housing, no doubt. Um, and so that's, you cut away at a lot of the extra applications that you need from, from the state of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. So, you sort of, again, do away with some of the project scoring type worksheets and things like that that make a manufacturing facility worthy of tax-exempt financing through a municipality. So these, I think these are probably, you know, ninety percent of the conduit bonds that, you know, I'm seeing out there, and our company doesn't work with these, but I do know, you know, how they, how they work generally. Um, we see these for, again, five oh one C three type corporations, and the bonds are, or note, so to speak, is placed with, you know, a bank, instead of selling these out to the market, because they're really a tough sell-out in the market, because it's all about the borrower, you know, on that end, and not about the municipality that has their, their name on it. So, um, so when you think about it, the, the bond documents are, are such that, you know, the city is pretty far away from any liability, as far as the payment of the bonds. Um, you are, I think, in the eyes of, you know, the trustee and the bank, you are still the lender out there, and there, you know, this corporation is still the borrower. But to get to that point, there, the documents are such that, you know, they're written that, you know, all of the, and I've got this in the conduit financing handout that I've got, that, that, that the only recourse the lender or the bond trustee has to the project revenues is a real estate and equipment pledged as collateral for the loan. The act, it's, the act is the Municipal Industrial Development Act, and it, it, it says that, that, that the obligations issued are not payable or charged upon any funds other than the revenues pledged to the, to the payment of the bonds, and the issuer isn't subject to any liability on them. So no holder of the obligations has a right to require any exercise of the taxing power of the issuer, which is you, the municipality, to pay the obligations or the interest, or enforce payment of obligations against any property in the city, except what's being mortgaged, basically. So, so the, the cut to the chase on this is the reason why a corporation, in this case, a nonprofit five oh one C three, would come to a municipality and ask for you to be the issuer, participate in the issuances, so their bank that they're getting the money from, that interest can be tax exempt, okay, both federal and state tax exempt to a point. Okay, this is where you come in and have to scratch your head and go, are we going to issue as a city more than ten million dollars of bonds this calendar year? So they do look for issuers that have some nexus to the project. You know, if you've got this facility in town, or if it's not in your city, that, you know, maybe there's some employment here that, you know, you go, folks are actually working at the facility, let's say, in, you know, a neighboring community. As long as that nexus is there, they can actually ask the, a municipality for that bank qualification, we, we call it. And what that does is, not only, not only affords the borrower of tax exempt, the tax exempt interest rate, which is much lower than just a regular commercial loan interest rate. The bank on the other end, you know, sort of a motivator, have these bank qualified, which is that ten million dollar, sort of, you know, federal limit every year that they put on bank qualifications. They're, they're able to deduct up to eighty percent of their carrying costs for that bond issue. So if they have to go borrow money for this, too, or take it out of someplace that, you know, is interest-bearing, that they can, you know, deduct that interest expense, okay, to carry this, to carry this bond. So it's really important for, for these borrowers out there to, to get a bank, a tax exempt bank qualified bond, bond issuer from a, from a city. So, you know, they'll go out and, you know, if they need more than ten million, sometimes they ask, you know, a number of communities, or if a community only has three million sort of left, they had maybe issued some huge, you know, projects on their own that they needed it for, because first and foremost, you want to take care of yourself, right? For that low interest rate borrowing. They may ask, you know, other cities, and other cities may issue other parts of this, of this bond issue. It's kind of a strange, it's kind of a strange nuance. I mean, you're also able to, as an issuer, and it depends, I guess, what the, what the, you know, the project is, I think they're going to refinance, is really what this is going to be. So it's not any new facility, it's just a refinancing. So, again, I mean, you know, they're trying to capture these wonderful low interest rates, and in the last four years, we've hit the historic low three times, and today it's at another all-time low. So I, I get what they're doing. You know, they want to save themselves money, which passes, right, the savings passes along to the folks that are in the senior facility, which is a, a good thing. But you can also charge an administration fee, too, if you want. I mean, that can be all the way up to one percent or so of the bond issue. But it's one of those things that you have to kind of think. I mean, there's staff time, I mean, these documents will be reviewed. I mean, it's nice that it's your own bond counsel, you know, that's doing this, too, but sometimes you'll get requests from a different bond attorney, too, that's just part of that team. And so, you know, you always want to be able to, or you always want to run all the documents through your own bond counsel, just to make sure that they're, you know, standard, and they're written in a way that, you know, keeps the city of, you know, mayor outside of any obligation to pay the bonds back. But, you know, when you think about it, too, that, you know, another responsibility you have on these, too, is what we call arbitrage monitoring, too. So, I mean, the trustee, and the documents can be written that arbitrage monitoring is, US Bank is typically a trustee. But sometimes, you know, you know, some of this, some of these calculations are done by a different company that's sort of out of your hands. So, you know, our company has, you know, arbitrage service like that. And that's basically, you know, if they borrow money and they don't pay it out right away, they can make money off of the tax exempt interest by investing it. Now, this is a refunding bond, so it's going to be one bond exchanged, you know, higher interest rate exchanged for a, you know, lower interest rate bond. So, the money will come and go pretty fast, so I don't see any concerns about that, basically. But your name is on the bond, and you are the issuer. So not only is, you know, are they using your bank qualification, your ten million, so you got to see, are we going to spend two million on something else, you know? Maybe we don't want to let them use the full ten million, so that's number one. And then number two, just to make sure that the city is taken care of with the arbitrage, you know, monitoring, and, and, and any kind of reporting like that, just to make sure, because I think that can kind of come around and be an issue for a city. Just to make sure, cause I think that can kind of come around and, um, be an issue, uh, for a city if that's not properly taken care of. Now, Briggs and Morgan's your bond attorney, they're, Catherine Courtney is, you know, I know her, and, um, I'll work with those guys, and they'll, they'll, you know, I don't see any other issue than just the city making sure that you're leaving some tax exempt room for yourself, basically, if you need it. So, because when I was at Waconia, and, um, I forget which entity was looking around for some issuance authority like that too, and we did, you know, we just issued, you know, almost five million tonight, and there's some other stuff coming down the pike. So, they only needed, I don't, in that case, they only needed five hundred grand from the city, so we did our quick calculations and said, yeah, we're good, there's room, so go for it. It was a little deal, and these can, things can be as small as three hundred thousand or go up to, you know, like I said, ten million or something. So, so really, um, you know, I think, you know, you're well taken care of that way as far as the documents are concerned. Um, and, and as long as you just, you know, you know, leave room for yourself on the tax exempt, uh, bonding authority there, you should be okay. And I don't know about the fee part, if sometimes, you know, I see an eighth of a percent or something, just to kind of cover. I mean, there's gonna be a public hearing, and that's, and that's really the only, uh, and it's just on the project. So, I think that public hearing will pretty much come and go, it's usually a non-event, cause there's no, you know, liability here of the city. Um, and if that's about it on a 501(c)(3) type nonprofit deal, and there's a lot more going on in a manufacturing deal with the city. Uh, and so, you know, not only is there a public hearing, but you're part of the process a little bit more on, on that with the deed applications and things like this. This is a pretty straightforward, um, you know, you, it'll, it'll come and go for you, you won't even know it, it was there. But I do want, as your municipal advisor, you guys to, just to make sure that, um, you know, you leave something on, on the table there if you need it. Now, I mean, that could be a USDA bond, that could be a PFA, Public Facilities Authority, but any tax exempt, uh, issue out there that you're thinking of, um, issuing. As a matter of fact, um, you know, we monitor your refundings too, and like, any kind of refunding that we call is not a current refunding, a refunding that can be, a, a new one can be issued, you know, within ninety days of the call date of the old bonds is pretty much one for one, and, and that doesn't really count if it was bank qualified to begin with. But if it's one that a call date is out a few years from now, and you want to lock it in, I think they've issued a few of those too, that there's an escrow agreement and things like that. Now, that would, that would count too. But that would have to be a, an expected issuance, basically. So, if you do this, and, you know, there's nothing on our radar that shows there's any refunding oppo- opportunities out there, and one arises, you know, four months from now or whatever, that's, that wasn't expected, and you should be, you know, good there too. So, um, but we can't forget those, you know, refinancings either.
So, the fee the city charges with a one half of one percent of the total issuance amount, a minimum of five thousand, a maximum of twenty-five thousand, as well as the non-conduit charge.
Yeah, it's nice to have.
And then our auditors should get involved in these also.
Yep.
Because there's a lot of time they have to fill the documents, and I think there's no one in our audit too.
Yep. So, there's some more time, that's another expense. And it's not just that you're charging expense to charge an expense, there's some real time there too, so, um. Yeah, so you should be, you should be good. I mean, these are, these, these housing bonds, whether they be for Presbyterian Homes in Minnesota, or any kind of 501(c)(3), um, it's nice to see them getting refinanced. It's also nice to see them getting built, you know? Um, we're all growing old, and, uh, and any help that, that you can give is, uh, you know, is obviously well received. And, and again, there's, there's no liability, and I think, you know, I've done enough of these, Briggs and Morgan would say the same thing, they could touch on it, they'd say the same thing too, so. Yep, any questions on, on those are a little odd, it's an oddity. Very, very, very odd thing, it is. But, uh, you know, it's either, you know, it's either, uh, um, you know, to gain tax exemption on a, on a, on a loan, you know, you really have to be, you know, a municipality, or a county, or a school, or, I mean, those folks don't have the ability to, you know, issue conduits, but cities do. And, uh, and the federal government has, you know, has given, given 501(c)(3)'s, um, sort of that same status, but they have to go asking for it from a city in a conduit situation. And again, to promote manufacturing, you know, you have to score enough, uh, you know, through deed and through the state, and it's pretty restricted, there's an allocation, you know, amount, you know, kind of like this ten million is an allocation sort of amount, you know, that you can't do too much, you know, or you're done for, for the calendar year. Same with, um, manufacturing authorities. So, the state, you know, says, hey, you know, we give you this much, you know, and if it gets used up, then, you know, that's it for tax exempt status for manufacturing facility financing from the state of Minnesota for that, for that year. You either wait, or, or you go, you go a different route temporarily, so, um, yeah.
So, if the city council's okay with this, the public funding will, will be set for May twenty-third.
Well, what is this project, and what's that connection to?
It's a refunding, it's a refunding. We're just refunding to, they're using it to refinance some parts that are now paying tax exempt, tax home that relate to the borrower's facility located in there.
So, it's something that's here, so I mean, there is some nexus to, to our community, and, cause now that we're, you know, talking about this, it just doesn't quite seem right to, if somebody's building up, you know, a, a manufacturing facility in another city, and here you are gonna, you know, help them get out from some of that tax burden by, you know, by putting our names on there.
This is a senior housing revenue refunding bond, so if you look on the letter, it tells you, this place, what it's for.
I've seen that, but this, this home over here, isn't it part of?
It's a, it's a, it's a, you know.
So, where's this one at?
I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's physically, I don't know.
No, they, they say in this email that the cities of Prior Lake and Hampton-
That's the Mari issuing too.
Are also issuing too. Um, no, there must be one, what do they call this, Shepherd's Path project, um.
So, there's nothing physically within our city then?
Probably not, no.
I don't think so at all.
No.
See, that's kind of a problem with.
It's actually located, it's actually, I'm looking at another one, it's actually located, it looks like it's all located in Prior Lake.
Which we did this for Girls Academy, if you remember.
Yeah, I remember that, so.
Yep. So, they're looking for other cities, again, to have some nexus. And I don't know how much they really worked on that part, I mean, Prior Lake's a ways away.
Yeah.
Okay, Presbyterian Ton- Homes though might.
You can tell me that three people that, that, you know, live here that work there, I think that makes sense to me, but just reaching out to.
I, I need to know so I can let them know, because they have to find another city then, that's what I have to do.
They may be reaching out to a city they work with, otherwise it's bond counsel, you know?
Right, and they, and that's why.
That's probably why.
They contacted us because they, we've, we've done it before. We've done it before because we had, we aren't gonna issue any debt because we have a double A stable rating.
Yep, you're familiar with this, like, like you say, you've done it before.
We've done it before, so that's why, you know.
So, what's, what's, I mean, the bottom line money, what are you, what are you out of it?
We will get up, we will probably get twenty-five, we'll get a half a percent of the ten, ten million.
So, they want all ten million of?
I believe so.
So, what kind of money are they saving on?
I don't know.
You know, in, I mean, cause I'm assuming that money, if they were to go to a lender in whatever, an, an-
Just a commercial lender.
A commercial lender, I'm assuming they're gonna pay what, tax to the government, to the federal government on that?
They will pay a higher interest rate, they'll pay a higher interest rate, it won't be tax exempt. So, if it's three percent, it might be five or something out in, you know, there's some, and it wouldn't be tax exempt in that.
And, and we get, we get some money out of it, the fees, so, I mean, it's not that we're.
Not getting it.
So, who's not getting that tax money then?
Not tax, it's, it's, they, you know what, these, um, I mean, it's my understanding is, but, e- even though it's a 501(c)(3), um, how I, how I see Presbyterian Homes, um, even if you're a, and what sort of more I know about, the, the entities that don't pay property taxes, and that was what you, if, if even a 501(c)(3), if even a hospital, I'm working in Long Prairie on one of these, even if the hospital owns a housing, it's tax, it's taxable. So, they have to spin off a, a new LLC or something that's just for that. And typ- typically, they also get tax increment, cause they pay property taxes and, and all that. So, it's not a, it's my understanding that this entity, because of the use, it's going for senior housing, they would pay property taxes.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, what they're doing is they're saying, okay, city of Mayor, you have ten million that is in, at the interest rate of two percent, and we're gonna take that, and we go to the bank, and the bank honors that, but that bank gets the collateral on buildings or whatever they have, and the bank borrows them that money, and what their advantage is, is they get the ability to be able to use our two percent interest rate as all.
Tax exempt.
And tax exempt two percent, that's all that's to get.
That's all it is, the, the bank, the bank has the ability to deduct that eighty percent of their carrying cost on that. So, that's a big deal, and as long as they can do that, that interest rate goes from here down to here, yep, yep.
So, they're still borrowing money from the bank?
Yep, it's really just a bank loan, but it's a different, it goes through the bond attorney, and it's more of a, it's more of a, uh, it's more of a, it's a commercial dissolve and revenue note, tax exempt then to them, instead of just a promissory note, you know, some simple commercial loan. The same, I would, I would bet, I mean, it's the same documents that they've gotta give to the, that bank, as if they'd be walking in for, you know, a loan just on their own. It's just that this, this, this allows this loan to be tax exempt, so it just takes that interest rate from here down to there.
Yes, even if we do this, there's still room for your, I think, I would just say there's still room for us if something comes up that we would need to issue some bonds this year.
No, we would have to make that.
If there's some capacity left from there.
You make, you make that decision.
We have to make that call and say that you can only borrow up to eight million.
Yep.
We're leaving two million open for our own.
Yep, yep.
We'll have to check on that.
Just check on that, this kind of just gives you the idea.
Cause you said one when Waconia was just five hundred thousand, and you guys had enough room that for them to just accept five hundred thousand.
But I, we are, so do, are we doing any projects this year?
Well, I'm just saying, what if, I mean, what if something comes up that we have to, I mean, no, I, we're not planning.
As long as you don't have a reasonable expectation for that, you're fine. You know, if you've got something in the CIP right now that says, hey, in November, you know, we're, we need to issue five million dollars, then you'd have to roll this back. So, I think anything that you don't have a reasonable expectation for, you're good.
Okay.
Something, an emergency would come up, or something.
Emergency, a re, a refinancing that just all of a sudden, boop, it works, you know, you know, we're good there too. It's just these planned projects that we have to, you know, you can't reasonably say on a stack of Bible, I didn't know anything about that one, you know, that, well, look, yeah, you did. So, that, so it sounds like you're probably okay, you know? I mean, that's anything, it's little equipment purchases that we do tax exempt loans for. Now, somebody, you know, copy machine guys that come around that do tax exempt internal financing fire truck, I mean, that's all tax exempt loans, and it's all part of that ten million. So, it doesn't have to be some big street utility wastewater sewer project either, it could be these little ones where, once you're tapped out here, you know, then, then you would, the trouble is, you'd almost have to do them taxable then, because you can't just, you can't go, uh, have issued a bank qualified ten million, and then go non, non-BQ or bank qualified for something else. You'd have to, that would have to be a taxable, so that would be a big hit if it wasn't, you know, if that was something you planned for and forgot about, you know, so.
So, who are they being taxed, how do we understand the tax exempt portion here?
The bank is, is tax exempt for the bank.
So, who would, so who would the bank be paying?
The bank pays, um.
The federal government?
The Presbyterian Homes pays the bank, it's just like a regular loan.
Got it, but if tax exempt, somebody is not getting tax money that they would have if they would've went through a regular loan, right?
It's a lower interest rate.
It's a lower.
It's just a lower in.
That's it, so there, you know, no municipality, federal government's not seeing a loss in any potential tax income, it's just, it's just strictly a lower.
It's a lower interest rate for the borrower, you know, basically, and they would still pay property taxes, I suspect, as it's for a senior housing facility.
But if it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, they don't.
They still do, not all, not, not all nonprofits don't pay taxes, yep, yep. So, that's my understanding, I mean, I don't know the makeup of this 501(c)(3), but all I know is, you know, when, you know, typically, that if you're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, normally don't pay taxes, you know, there's use provisions, and what you can do to not pay property taxes just falls outside of that, so housing does. So, they, I suspect, the, all the Presbyterian Homes deals that I know of, in Roseville, and Arden Hills, and around the area, they pay property taxes, cause they use tax income and financing to help lower their rents down to, yeah, yep. So, it's strictly to lower that interest rate down.
Presbyterian Homes is a pretty big.
It's actually, yeah.
Oh, is it? And that's why, there's your, there's your.
Nexus, yeah, they're here.
Plus, uh, I know that, uh, that's one of the places that Waconia uses, if they don't, if there's no room in any of the places that are close to Waconia, then Presbyterian is one of them that accepts people in the community, so.
I'm just curious, like, how they decide which cities to approach, you know?
First of all, you have to get the ones with the good ratings, and that are agile, in the first place.
This isn't even on your own rating, this is just, this is, this would be non-rated, just strictly on the borrower. It's, it's that odd, there, it's, it's, cause you don't, yeah, it's not, your rating's on your general obligation, you know, for a regular municipal project, this is not, this is not.
It's just finding a city that has the open ten million, that doesn't have current bonds, if they have to issue that year.
Yep, and as long as the bank, the bank is, knows that they can, you know, some banks, you know, they're kind of like our company. There's banks out there that are these ESOPs, there's employer stock ownership, you know, that don't pay, that don't benefit from tax exempt interest. That's why I don't get bids from some banks, when they just, you know, solicit or ask for, you know, bids for bonds, cause they say, well, this tax exempt interest doesn't do me any good, you know? If it's taxable, great, cause we don't pay, we don't pay taxes, income taxes, basically, not property taxes, income. And, uh, and, and so, and so the ability then to deduct their interest expense for being bank qualified, that's, now they're in the game, now they're in, now they're in, yep, cause they've got.
The bank that's saving the money, so, I mean, in turn, they're saving money, they can lower the interest rate, that, that's.
That's, that's right, yep, yep. They're able to do their thing on their end, or it benefits them so they can give that lower interest rate to those folks, so their money isn't costing them as much.
So then, so then the bank isn't paying as much income tax.
Yep, that's what.
To the federal government, and, and, and the end, so, so, so it is, so the person that's being shorted is, is the federal government, which is still all the way up.
Right, and when you issue, yeah, and when you issue governmental bond, you know, we're, we're, you're doing the same thing. And that's the benefit, you know, it lowers your, right?
So, that's, I mean, that's for a city purpose, I mean, I, I get that.
Yep, yep.
So, um, do private, private industries get in on this, come to, come to cities, or does it have to be a 501(c)(3) company, or?
You know, in this day and age, it's really hard to sell like one of those manufacturing type bonds like that, there's probably a few out there, but it's mostly housing. I think Briggs and Morgan will tell you most of this is all, is all housing, and it doesn't.
I bet you're just more and more with all these baby boomers, I guess.
The demand on that too, yep, yep. And, and, uh, there's lots of restrictions on this stuff too, you know, they've gotta buy, buy, um, certain things, especially in the manufacturing part. So, um, yeah, you don't see as much of that, um, as you used to, but, but, and a lot of these are privately placed now with banks, you know, it's probably, you know, Presbyterian Homes has a huge track record out there, they've got one of their, you know, num- number of their banks probably are stepping up to the plate on this, so they don't get sold out in the market, you know, as a bond out there, not much anymore, um, that's sort of gone away, so. So, you do, you do have a local bank floating around out there that, or a number of them are, I don't know, that's, you know, it's business for them too, obviously, so, you know, they can write a loan on that. That's employment right there.
Okay, what percent do we get, or what percent do we collect?
A half a percent, uh, minimum of five, and a maximum of twenty-five thousand, or a half a percent of that for additional.
So, at least five?
At least five, I would say so, but there is, except for, except for, no, but we don't know if they're, they want all ten million. I think they do, I didn't plan this.
This must be a really large refinancing, cause it's Prior Lake and Hampton and you, right, is how I'm reading it. Because it's Prior Lake and Hampton and you, right, is how I'm reading this.
Yep, we're in college, it's the Prior Lake and Hampton Law School, and all the stations by that.
So they've got so many of these projects all around the area that, you know, they've got opportunities to, you know, save some money on their, on their loans. So they're, they're maxing that out for sure.
Okay, so you said the.
The public hearing is set for May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, okay.
Unless you're telling me you don't want it.
I don't see, I mean, it's, there's no, cities aren't on hold for anything, it's, it's going to get, make a little money out of it. So as long as we're not, not cautious of anything.
They can get together with the Waconia group that wants to build elderly homes and get something close to us.
Yep, yeah, they just presented tonight, yep, that group.
It's needed, it is needed in this area.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I think we are adjourned.